Clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Please stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God.
Liberty and justice for all.
Well, to get things moving, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, so first thing on the agenda. Oh, we jump right to communications. Student representative reports. Oh, yes, right, we've got a vote on the agenda. Good poll. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Hi.
All right, all of us. All right, then we move on to communications, and the first one on that is student representative reports. You gonna jump in, Zee?
Apparently, they flipped the wrong switch.
This past week, I finished my leadership fellowship with CBC. I received the certificate of completion this Sunday, I think. That's what I've been up to.
Congratulations.
My report's not going to be as short, so I apologize beforehand. I had handed it out to you guys. I hope you guys had a chance to look at it, so I'm gonna go ahead and read it. I would like to bring up an issue to the board's attention. As a student rep and a voice for the students at Prosser High School, it's my time to finally say and do something. Now that we've seen, not only once, but twice, that the levy did not pass, this issue must be brought up and fixed. The issue I would like to bring up is that voting has never been promoted or encouraged by your staff at Prosser High School. We have never been provided the resources to do so, or even encouraged to as well. We have seen the consequences that have come from this, and it's time to make a change. There are limited opportunities for students to register to vote, and it's also not made a priority for students. And students have not been provided with all the necessary information so that they understand why participating in the electoral process is important for the health of their future community. Thanks to Brett Dillahun, a current teacher at the high school, I was able to vote for the first time yesterday. He not only assured me that I was registered to vote, he also provides the time in class to do so. He provides the next generation with an opportunity to finally make a change in the community they grew up in. He assured us that our opinions and voice were going to be heard. Not, not many teachers do this or take the time to help assure that our future generations are set well for the future. We see that many students never truly get the chance to voice their opinion. As we saw yesterday, we have come to a standstill, and we will start to see our community change as well. This failure of the levy is not the fault of the boards, nor those in office, but our community. We have had the chance to make the levy pass a reality, yet we let our judgment or feelings of our district get in the way. We, as a Prosser community, have always preached and preter says on how well bonded we are, as well as support one another. In the recent year, we have fallen short from this, which is very much noted as we saw with our now two fails at attempting to pass the levy. We are more worried about the smaller picture and not who, who will be truly affected by these issues. The levy isn't meant for the parents, but for the students, which should be our priority. We, as a community, need to see beyond what has occurred in our district and do what is best for the future kids at Prosser High School. Punishing our future Mustangs has and never will be the answer. On many occasions, we ask ourselves why things don't get passed in our school district or simply blame it on the school board, but we never truly see what occurs within our school. We never take the time to see the issues presented at hand till it's too late. We don't ever worry until the votes are counted. As I'm getting ready to graduate and move out into the so-called real world, this is now a huge issue. To know that those who not only taught me but have made it possible for me to go out into the real world have also failed me is truly saddening. I am one of hundreds of students who realize that Prosser is not truly setting students to be ready for the future. I not only ask for the board to help with this issue, but don't let it repeat itself for the future generations to come. One day, we may be looking back and say, why didn't we do this sooner? And yet again, it'll be too late. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. Was there any of the students on Zoom? Nobody's jumping up. Did we have any of you signed up? WM2 is what it says. And four. Mine was way down there because Peggy and. All right, let me back up for just a second. We have one more student walk in. Do you have a report for tonight? Sorry to put you on the spot. Okay, it's all good. So we do have two people signed up. I don't guess you have a copy of the, what we do right here. Okay, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that prior to the start of the meeting, you sign in noting the topic and intent to address the board. Come to the microphone, state your name, please spell it. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic view, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. Try to keep your comments concise, non-emotional, brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns, complain, complaints, too. If possible, it's best to best to call the superintendent's office a couple days before the board meeting. If that isn't possible, ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing session, which is what the sign-in sheet is. And we will go with Kathy Riplinger.
Andy, could, Andy, this is Peggy. Could you ask people to speak up just a little bit?
Ask who to speak up? Me?
No, the speakers. Thank you.
Hey Peggy, my name's Kathy Riplinger, R-I-P-P-L-I-N-G-E-R. I'm Prosser. I just have a concern here. I was wanting to bring up and address the board. As you know, small towns have one heck of a grapevine. Word of mouth flies around 100 miles an hour, and things get said and repeated over and over, and you aren't sure if there's 100% truth in it or absolutely none. But they go and they go fast. So with that in mind, some of that grapevine actually got to my ears and making me concerned here. I want to ask, I have heard in the last two, three weeks, there's been three kids assaulted at school, had the crap beat out of them. And I don't know if that's true or not, and I also heard that there was a teacher involved with one of them that was egging the kids on to continue to do the thumping on this kid. And I want to know if this is true, but has truth to it? Has it been investigated? Have, if it turns out that it is true, have the kids been suspended? And has a teacher been fired? I think, and if it's not true, you guys need to let people know that, so, you know, grapevine works both ways. It can be stopped, too, if, if we know the truth. And, you know, we need to know if it's how it's handled, if it's the truth. So, Matt was.
Yeah, I'm aware of any allegations against any personnel within the Prosser School District like that. If you have information, please share that with us, and of course, we'll investigate it. If such thing did happen, it'd be a sharp deviation from our standards as a district if those allegations were actually true. So we deal with that very seriously. It is springtime. We have had some instances of, you know, some, some fights in school, and our administration has dealt with that. Our building principals have dealt with that. So, and as a board, we've worked with it, and we've actually discussed it, and we're moving on some of the policies and discussing how we can recommunicate our standards to parents and students in ways that we can work, work better at preventing that.
I would just like to add to that. I know of one fight, two kids. No personnel that was involved, other than the security guy that helped break it up. I would like to add, though, that in Jason and our meeting last Wednesday, we spent probably, what, two hours going over bullying and different, I guess, updating policies for in the future due to some of the recent drama, so. But I don't know about, you know, what exactly you're, I haven't heard that one yet, so. Oh, like lightning? Okay, and then Rachel Phillips.
Hello, my name is Rachel Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S. I won't be long. My one-year-old is outside probably screaming. I am just, it's, it's not a huge issue compared to other things, probably, but it's on my heart as a mom. Our, we had our Rotary meet at the track this past week, and I have two high school kids that, that run in track. One of them, the shin splints are so bad, their, their shins are blue and purple, and we're having to buy ice bags at night and just put them in our bathtub so they can sit in ice. The track is, is so bad. It's so bad, the condition, and it's just hurting the kids. One of the baseball players yesterday couldn't run to first base because his shin splints were so bad. So they had to get a runner for him. I'm just bringing it to you because it breaks my heart to watch these kids hurt so bad, and they love playing the sport, especially after COVID. Nobody's not going to run because they love being a part of it, but it's just killing their, their bodies. And so, and you know, we're so happy to have these events. Rotary did an amazing job. The parents were so supportive. It was such a fun event. But we heard so many schools say that they're not coming back till we get a better track. And so that just made me sad, just because it's so fun having stuff here on our home turf. So I just wanted to bring that to, to the board. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And knowing your boys are not cutters, so. All right, that's all we. Oh, we have signed up to speak. Anybody else? Run to the front? All right, so next will be. Oh, do we have anybody on Zoom? Sean? Okay. I don't know what I do without all these little voices in my head. This is awesome. All right, so we have, next we have consent, consent agenda revised. Entertain a motion?
So move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Then we jump down to action items. First one on action items is vouchers. Entertain a motion to approve the vouchers?
So move.
Okay, I got Jason here, and that was Peggy? With the second.
I think it was Jeanie.
Yes.
Oh, it was Jeanie?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry, by the time I get, look sideways and see who's. See who's up there. Okay, all in favor of approving the vouchers?
I have a number of questions.
Aye.
Yes, sir?
So we'll just start at the top. So Amazon Capital Services has a number of line items for preschool. My question is, is where does the funding come from for preschool? No, Amazon Capital Services, sorry.
Is that the 50?
So 905074?
Yes. So I get my, I guess my point of question, does preschool come out of basic ed, or is it a a levy-funded?
So there's, there's various. As you can see, invoices in there. Anything with a 12 is out of ESER. The first two numbers, if it's 12, 0, 0, is ESER.
But ESER dollars are COVID-related monies, right?
Grant. Yep. And then anything with 97, 0, 0, looks like there's some supplies. 12, activity 12 is Mr. Ellis's superintendent, so that's, that's basic education. There's some one there for $148.
Yeah, I'm specifically referring to the preschool. I don't think, I could be wrong.
So is there a specific invoice you're looking at?
No, it's just a general comment. So when we talk, and I ask about preschool, is it a, is it a state-funded? I know ESER funds or.
We have a preschool that's special education.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't know if there was a specific invoice in that.
Nope, general comment.
Okay.
So it's a little bit of both, is what you're saying?
Right. I thought you were referring to the actual dollars out of Amazon Capital Services.
Nope, just general. Code Work Inc., 5099. The headline, the detail just says monitoring software. What are we monitoring?
That will be Ms. Cook. Sean, you want to answer that one? Code Work Inc.?
Code Work Inc., it says monitoring software.
143280. 5099. Let me look. That's actually some software for the vocational program. So that would be out of the high school CTE program.
That's all right. I'm sure there's one in here to get you down. I guess my, my question is, what are we monitoring? That's, that was my, my question. It's not the.
So the description is vision class kit. Vision class kit dash one teacher, unlimited students. That's, that's the only description it is.
Okay.
It's a subscription, it looks like.
Next one is 151 Planet Turf. It didn't have a very good description, so I'm just asking to clarify.
I just want to look at the description. So that's grounds. So this is 16 white canisters, 2.64 gallons. This is, this is, this is paid out of, out of the grounds department.
Okay.
There's white canisters, yellow also.
Paint and lines, I think. Okay, thank you.
The code work, well, this is according to Google and their website, but code work, the code work Net Top Vision Pro is a system that allows teachers to see what kids are doing on theirs, on that site while they're in that program so they can control their access, they can monitor the work they're doing, they can, you know, help them with getting logged in, all, they can do screen sharing, so it's kind of, it is, yeah, it's kind of like keeping an eye on the, on what they're doing during their class time on that program.
Thank you. My last one for this set of vouchers is, I still have a, just a general comment on the Home Depot. We're spending $12,000 there this month. And as you go through these, you see a bunch at different hardware stores, et cetera, et cetera. You know, do we, do we actually physically have to go down and pick stuff up? Or is it something that's delivered, you know, upon order? My primary not concern, but issue with this is I think it goes back to the taking, getting stuff out to bin, you know, now that we're gonna be in a potentially difficult situation financially. I think this is a perfect opportunity to start making sure we can justify every single expense.
I agree.
And at $4.50 fuel, if we're driving there a bunch of times, I don't think that's very, very wise either.
I can find out how it's, if it's delivered or if it's picked up.
Depot Pro, so that should be a contractor doing something.
We've had that, you know, almost in every single voucher.
With the Pro? Or was it? Okay.
I have two more, but they're in capital. Okay. One is Four Seasons Landscape. Based on the, the description, it says it's a down payment to clean up weeds and et cetera at the high school. I have a hard time believing that the, the general contractor would do above the hill and below the hill, but not the hill itself. What's that?
That's this, that's the weedy hill, right?
As you drive up?
As you drive up.
Well, that's, that's my point. It says we're, we're giving them a down payment of $8,000 for them to clean up something that the contractor probably should have done. He did the lower half of the hill and the upper half, but not the middle. Am I right or wrong?
So that landscape design was originally billed to us as native plantings. And yes, native grasses, and so they were going, evidently, the plan was to leave some of it natural. But really, ultimately, what happened was it's over, it's the irrigation, it's down a hill, and so all it is doing is becoming weedy. So they actually did design it that way, to not really technically do anything in that strip, and it looked terrible. There's a lot of weeds and all of that growing there. So no, that was the design of the architects and the landscape architect. Perhaps in our the, I think we've learned that the code for native plantings means weeds.
Yes.
Yes. So I think their intention was that it wasn't really going to be irrigated, so it'd just be the, like, the native bunch of grasses. There's some sagebrush there and some things there, but the, it's, the irrigation causes to be weeds.
So then if this is a down payment, what is the final cost gonna be to complete the project?
$8,200 more or so.
$8,200 more?
This is half.
So they're gonna clean it and replant it? Oh, okay, so the cleaning part might only be minimal. It's probably gonna be the spray-on seed and all that, or whatever they're.
This is an example, or getting bids is a good thing, because we did get three or four bids. This bid was the lowest. I think 15,000 or 16,000, I don't remember exactly. The highest bid was $65,000.
Did we try to talk to the contractor and the architect and say, hey, your design didn't work? Can you fix this? You guys gotta use a mic.
Yeah, we, we did, and they said, we can give you a list of plants and bunch of grasses to plant. But basically, you know, you, those were the plans, and everybody was okay with it until we weren't, so. We do have contingency funds and things like that. I think we can address it with and pay for it out of, and so we do have it within the capital, capital bond that we can use some of those funds. But yeah, I think that we kind of got snookered a little bit on the language. Native grasses sounded good, and the idea of like, well, you're.
Will they plant any grasses, or did they just let it grow natural?
I don't know if they, they seeded it with particular things. I, I'm a little bit suspect of it, but the, they build it as, you know, like, our biology classes could go out there, and the students would, would kind of see the, the grasses that are not only native to our area, but also on the horse heaven hills and things like that. So when that came in, and of course, as Deanna talked about, just over, over time, the, the irrigation and stuff like that, it started to look more like weeds and tumbleweeds than it did, and so so when the high school was completed, it was like, hey, we have this beautiful building, but what's, what's this business going on? So it was something that we know that we need to correct. Another correction is actually, at the bottom of the hill, there's a drainage area. And we've been in conversation with the cemetery that, that drainage area is actually leaking over into their, to their land and in their plots and things like that. So that'll be something that we may need to correct, too. Yeah.
Well, instead of plant, maybe we should look at roundup gravel.
Yeah, that was, that was another you know, gravel it and then do like a PHS or some, some, you know, even like the Mustang
Something.
logo in different colored rock.
And I'm, and I'm done. BSN Sports, I think we've had this on the list at least two other times. And it's always for wrestling mats, so my question, is it just where they're coming in and being billed sporadically, or, or how many wrestling mats do we have?
You're looking at BSN Sports?
Yeah, 458.
Or you're looking at Dolomir LP? That's the wrestling mats is the.
Oh, maybe it's that one, sorry. My highlights cover both of them. Whatever the wrestling mats one is. It might be Dolomer. Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
I know they had more coming.
Brian, you know, the wrestling mats kind of trickled in, not come all when they were supposed to?
But we're paying for them?
Well, we got a bill for them.
Well, I, I mean, I.
This shows a ship date of 3/29 and an invoice of $12,000.
And I think we had the same thing on the last set of vouchers at our last meeting. Or maybe it was a month ago. Or maybe it was a, a month ago, but
so it shows it shipped, it's not delivered.
Yeah. Thirteen hundred ninety-one dollars of shipping. Well, you could always hold on that.
Absolutely. I think we should.
She's calling me.
Yes. Where are they coming from?
So I just want to clarify, on four fifteen, we have the exact same invoice?
Texas.
They're coming from Texas. Don't know who's on the phone, but.
Sorry, that was Laura Green saying we have two practice mats. And two meet mats. So you're saying we don't have any wrestling mats? Yeah.
I'm assuming if they were at the middle school, Mr. Denny would be. Probably not. You don't say.
So the only, the only text from Lori is that Kevin Lusk signed off on the payment, so. I don't want to throw him under the bus, but but he's signing off that go ahead and pay it. So we'll have to, and you can always not.
If it shows they shipped, it's at least.
Yeah.
So here's.
How do you want to handle it?
Here's last, this is our last voucher list with the exact same invoice.
From last week?
Or from four seventeen, or fif- whatever our last meeting was.
Yeah, why don't we hold on it?
Yeah, we could certainly approve the vouchers with, without that one. We could void the check.
What is it? Four? Hold on, that's four thirteen. The four fifty-nine. That's all.
Well, that's good. I didn't realize that. We're here.
I, I have a couple of questions. So zero eight three for the Benton County PUD. Is this, that is thirty-one thousand dollars, and it's usually here on every voucher list. So is that what we're paying for all the schools, but Woodstrand on a monthly basis for utilities?
Benton PUD. Yes. Looks like for all the buildings.
And I don't know that it makes a big impact, but I know that the lights are on in this, the new, the classroom wing of the high school. Most of the lights are on overnight. I've had people in the neighborhood, my mom lives where she can see them, and they're like, doesn't someone want to turn off the lights and save a little, save a little bit of money or energy? We shouldn't have that much energy at heights right now, other than construction equipment, maybe. River View, I mean, that seems like, I guess it would be interesting to see a breakdown per school, and if there's a way to cut it significantly or just, you know, I think in the current situation, cutting it by a couple hundred dollars is important, I think, every dollar. So that would be my question to look into that. My next one, and it kind of follows with the Jason's question with all season, we have a payment to Davies Total Lawn Care and then also one to Valley Water Services, and I couldn't see what those are for. Davies Lawn Care is one oh six?
Yeah, I know we've talked about Davies Lawn Care before. Nine oh five, one oh six. One oh six.
Valley Water Services, one seventy-five.
This was a consultation request regarding to a backflow device placement.
For which facility?
I thought you were talking about, you're not asking about Davies Lawn Care?
Um, Davies Lawn Care and Total Valley Water, thank you.
Right. But Davies Lawn Care, I'm, I'm trying to answer that one first. That's a backflow device repair.
For which building?
KRV.
And is that beyond the scope of our maintenance department then?
I'm sorry?
Is that work beyond the scope of our maintenance department?
I would say yes, must be.
And then Valley Water Services.
Valley Water Services. That's dealing with the Woodstrand well. We pay a fee to them to monitor the, the water at the well in, at Woodstrand.
Is that a maintenance contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
A number of years back, they changed the law that you have to monitor for, like, so that I, I do remember that now. They do all the, all the buildings, like, twice a year.
I had a couple more questions. Election Reserve Fund, fifteen thousand five hundred and forty-five, one hundred and ten.
That's the election cost for February?
For February, that was the cost to run the levy?
Yes.
And we anticipate the April cost will be higher because not as many.
Just be between us, Kenawick and Findlay.
Pratt Electric, one five two.
Eight hundred and thirteen dollars, one five two. There's an invoice for three hundred and sixty-three dollars, which number of batteries. One point five volts, nine volt. Triple A, double A, just a lot of batteries. And then the other invoice was for four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. I'm not sure what this description is. So it says time delay, ULJ time delay. I'm not sure what that is. So I can't answer what that invoice is for.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Jeannie Piggy? Have anything?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Nothing from Jeannie.
I'm fine also. I'm fine, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you. That is a cactus in the background.
That's what?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the vouchers? Oh, that's, that's right.
I approve.
I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Let me go back. Jason, you motioned first, and Jeannie motioned second.
Yeah, I would like to amend my motion for the vouchers once I find it. Move to.
I'll turn over that one.
Vouchers, pulling check number four fifty-nine from the capital voucher list. Don't, Dolomar LP.
Yeah, I believe so. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second the amendment to pull that one voucher.
All right, guys, thank you. With that motion and a second, do we have approval of the vouchers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're good. Okay, action items. Next would be out-of-state requests. This is for football, girls, basketball, and boys baseball, no, boys basketball, excuse me, I can't read. This was from.
I have a, I have a question on this one. Is this for the, is this for the twenty-two, twenty-three season, playing season?
Yeah, it would be for this summer. I, I know the BSE camp will take off middle of June to the football.
Okay.
I say no to that, people.
Yeah, I'd like to table this one for now. This is Peggy, and I'd like to propose that we table this out-of-state request for the time being.
We can sure do that.
What is the source of funding for it?
Do we have to have a second to table it? All right, so Director Douglas moved to table this particular item for another meeting. Do we have a second?
I don't know if I can. Sounds like it dies for lack of seconds.
Do we, I don't even know if I can second things.
Can? You're still a board member.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, in that case, I will second it, even if we just set it aside for the next meeting. I would like to know how to travel. Were you jumping up to talk, Brian? Absolutely. Before we go any further, that would be a good.
These camps, these camps are not paid for by the school. This is money generated from the students themselves. They pay for their own camps. They pay for their own travel. We provide the bus to go and the, and the vehicles that they take, but the students themselves pay for that as part of their fees for the camp. So none of the money comes from the district. It is a hundred percent funded by students.
So you're only asking permission to travel out of state?
That is correct.
That would have been my question as well. So, did you catch that, Peggy?
I did. I still think that we, we probably need some time to really think about this. Unless they're under a timeline that if they don't get booked into the camp, they're going to lose an opportunity to participate. I'd like to table it until we have a chance to think through, you know, things like rooming and, and, I mean, there were a lot of issues this last year, and I think I'd like to have some time for us to really think this process through.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second to table it. We will have a meeting, we don't know this yet, but we will have a meeting next week anyway.
Could we have further discussion?
Yeah, I think. Go ahead.
Yes, there is a timeline here. We will lose our spot.
For Boise?
Yes.
It's a part of.
In addition, the basketball camps, we also lose the opportunity to stay in the dormitories there. So many of the issues, I know there have been issues this year. All of those have been noted. We are working through those issues and hope to mitigate any of that for future trips. She's asking to turn it up. I can probably just speak louder. I apologize. But yes, both, all of these trips have time components, timed, timed components. The football trip, we would lose out on the opportunity to go completely. Basketball trips, we may lose out on our opportunity to room and, for room and board for these students.
Okay, so Boise is, Boise is at least sensitive, and the other ones are same situation?
They are all time sensitive, yes.
Okay.
So is the football team co-ed?
It is not.
Is the girls' basketball team co-ed?
It is not.
Is the boys' basketball team co-ed?
There's, so the boys and girls, if they're both, are they both going to Seaside? I can't remember.
It just says boys for Seaside, and it says girls for Corvallis.
So they are going to separate, and they are not, they are not co-ed.
Okay. So I would move to approve travel out of state for football camp. I would move to approve travel out of state for girls' basketball camp at OSU in Corvallis. And I would approve travel to Seaside for the boys' basketball team for that tournament.
I would second that, but I think we've got kind of a quandary.
Yeah, we.
On our hands now.
We jumped up before I heard from Brian, so.
But I would like to make a couple comments on this. If it is being self-funded by the athletes themselves, we've approved travel over two consecutive meetings out of, out of, out of state or out of area, whatever it's called. I don't see why this is any different considering that they pay for it themselves.
Yeah, that's where I'm at too. I know, I know, well, having gone with the football team numerous times, they sell the gold cards and do all sorts of fundraisers.
And I think that, you know, this, now more than ever, you know, our, our athletes and, you know, our after-school programs, et cetera, are gonna have to do more of this in, in the coming weeks, I believe, so.
Well, being time sensitive and being that I've gone with multiple teams in the years past, I have no problem with this at all. However, we started with the tablet for a meeting until we could find out more with a motion of second. Do we have to vote on that first then?
You can withdraw your second.
Okay, well, then I will, I will withdraw my second.
I, I'd like to add, I'd like to add something though, if I may. I, I, while we were talking, I had an opportunity to look in on, on the chat feature. And apparently this has been sitting on Mr. Lusk's desk for over a month. And that the Boise camp, the students leave before school's even out.
When is it?
And
It's addressed in the package.
And so that, that actually adds an element of concern again for me that, one, that if Mr. Lusk knew about this a month ago, that now we're into a last minute notification to the school board, which always is, I hate, I hate that last minute decision on our part, so we don't have an opportunity to have a chance to really think, think the whole process through. It puts us in a bad place. And you know, the, the fact that, that we have kids leaving before school's even out for the year, so I decided I'd go ahead and throw that out there. It is on, on the chat feature. But, and we don't normally get that because we know, don't normally, I don't normally zoom into meetings. I'm actually participating in the meetings, but just, I'll put, I just wanted to lay that out there for the rest of the board to consider also. All right, we can move, we can move forward, Andy.
Jeannie, do you have any comments?
Since the kids are raising their own money or paying to attend the camp, and we're not gonna have any co-ed issues, then I will be okay with it. I don't want them to miss because we have to wait for the next meeting.
Fair enough. I would like to agree with Mrs. Douglas, though, that waiting until the eleventh hour to set it in front of us is kind of a, is what it is, I guess. All right, so we have a second to approve the out-of-state travel. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say no on it.
Peggy went back. She did. Just gotta mark that. I screw the minutes up every week, so. Selena sends me nasty emails. All right, so that is the end of action items. Discussion items, A, preliminary levy results.
Okay, it's on. Okay, so the preliminary levy results came back that the levy did not pass. There's still some votes to be counted, but it looks like it won't. So there'll be an update tomorrow afternoon. So we have some, we have some discussions and some decisions to make moving forward. We need to probably look at the budget and start some prioritization. And so what the, what the mechanics of that look like is that we'll probably need to develop a resolution and declare a financial or budgetary emergency. With that, the board will need to kind of construct some priorities. And then by the end of the second week in May, we'll need to notify about reductions in force. And so there are a couple other decisions that we talked about. Of course, we talked about mitigating that impact with a tech and security levy. You know, that's an option. We talked initially about when it failed the first time, that there is an option of taking out a loan. Cedro Woolley did that a couple years ago, that, that they'd taken out a loan. Regardless, we do need to communicate with our stakeholders and other districts that we partner with about that, what that will look like and what that will kind of be for, like for them. And so one of those partners, of course, is Patterson School District, who utilizes our middle school athletic programs. And then, of course, we're gonna need to work with our labor partners and the different unions and representatives there to make sure that they're notified and that they know kind of what's coming down the way. So that, that is kind of the discussion at hand. We'd gone over a priority list, kind of a brainstorm or spitballing what, what the budget cuts could look like. And so I'm gonna either recommend that we set up meetings with board members and they can start as early as tomorrow and probably run as late as Monday, Monday or Tuesday, about developing kind of the priorities. That could also, it could either happen based upon your schedules. If you're busy, it can happen in our office and we can meet with a couple of you at a time. Or if everybody's schedule's clear, we can do that Monday. And then, of course, trying to get to a decision and develop a common understanding. And then on Wednesday of next week, we would basically vote on that resolution and come out with those priorities and kind of talk through them and, and maybe even take a vote on that. And then we would go about notifying people and modifying the budget for next year. Of course, the budget needs to be approved in July of each year. So that's kind of the mechanics of it and what that will look like for us. And so questions and/or discussion from the board.
I'd like to go ahead and add to what Matt said. I think we should do a Monday meeting, probably, and a Wednesday meeting. Get them on the books now. If everybody, if nobody's opposed to that. And then I would really like to see as much time as each of us can spare with your thoughts and notes. Go in and talk with Matt and Craig. I've already been jotting some stuff down. I'm sure you guys have as well. Peggy's supposed to be, I don't think, Jeannie, you're not back for a while, are you?
I'll be back tomorrow.
Oh, okay, my bad. So yeah, you, you and Peggy as well, if at all possible, if you guys could. Well, number one, are you guys okay with both a Monday and a Wednesday meeting?
I can do both Monday and Wednesday. Yeah.
It won't be a problem for me. I can make both.
Okay, are you guys okay with it? Okay, well, we could zoom in or phone in or whatever we have to do.
Can we do, can we do an early start, though, Andy? An earlier start? Like instead of a seven, do a six thirty or a six?
We can do six if everybody's okay with it. I have no problem.
Yeah, so.
All right, I've got it in my calendar.
Since this is a special board meeting, we could post the time and the location for anywhere that's comfortable. It might be best if we did it up in the.
Oh, God, yes.
Library again. And then part of what we'll do for Monday as well is come up with what I'll call kind of a mitigation plan for the rest of the year. And so what that looks like is freezing and or canceling of services current taking place. And so freezing budgets and things like that towards the end of the year. And so the, the focus, the focus for the end or the next couple of months will be pinching, pinching pennies. And then, of course, deciding on where, where the cuts will come from the next year. So that's kind of a twofold, you know, twofold what we'll be looking at, at that, at that meeting on Monday.
All right, guys, that's, we have to look forward to. Let's move on to the second discussion item, which is B, first reading of the policy and procedure seventeen thirty-three. Everybody have a chance to go over it?
Yes, I have, Andy.
Yeah, I'm good.
One thing, we talked at the work session about the procedure was to add that board compensation is to be reviewed by the board during a regular meeting or something of that nature.
Yes, did it not?
It's not in here in the procedures, or I haven't found it, or I read over it.
Okay, yeah, we, we did this draft based upon the changes that we heard. I'm writing down what you had said.
I think we worded it like anything other than a regular scheduled board meeting has to be approved.
Yeah, typically first readings go on action items. And so there is a first approval and a second approval. But we, you know, the intent of having it on kind of a discussion was to, you know, double check the work so we could, so you can give input. Yeah.
Okay, well, as long as we know it's gonna be in there. So are we all good with the first reading?
So I have a question on letter B. It reads, serving as a designated representative of the board, including but not limited to such activities of school committees, community development, and/or betterment committees, collective bargaining, et cetera. And we had discussed that it would be a school board meeting or otherwise as approved of the board. And I think that's too broad. And I think it shouldn't just be that a school board meeting is one hour. I think each activity being of one hour, and that's what we discussed. So I would say take out B. I think the additional language on C, so we have attending board-approved training and/or development activities. Then we have included but not limited to, I would just say attending board-approved training and/or development activities, period, and take out the rest. And then on D, same, attending special board-related activities when approved by the board in advance and take out the other items. I think it just has to be approved by the board. I don't think we need any of that additional language.
If we just went with A as it reads and then literally had a B, anything else has to be approved by board.
I think that would be efficient.
Yeah, I mean, there's no sense in having a ton of that in there.
I, I agree. That just makes so much sense, Andy.
First time I've ever been accused of that. You guys have any comments?
We also talked about adding a box on the claim form for declining.
Oh, that's right, yearly. We wanted to do that yearly, like first of the year. We either, I forgot about that.
Andy, on the yearly, I thought Craig said it could be yearly or, or that at any time we could, we could change that. So let's say we decided to, to mark that for like six months or, or any length of time, but at any time we could go in and change that if we needed to.
I suppose if a board member did it when they first got elected as part of their.
And something came up that, then they needed, found out that, that maybe they needed to collect that money, that they could go in and, and, and change that to opt into, to collecting those funds. It wouldn't be held to a full year.
Is that reasonable, Craig? We just have a, a box that you check when you first get elected or your first time you're sworn in and, and it follows you until. Oh, so it had, there has to be a, an exact time or just until?
I'm just reading the, the procedure. Board member way, wave for any month or months during his term, his or her term of. I mean, you certainly could say, I waved for the entirety of my term.
You just box with a full term.
Yeah.
Or one year, whatever, you could sign it, initial it, and be done. But that way you get it once when you walk in and then you're done for three years. You don't have to.
Or if it may change, you could say for three months and then in three months you do it again or whatever.
Yeah, does that sound all right?
We could.
Says, you know, I imagine we'll end up having, we're freezing this completely.
Yeah, probably.
You hear rather quickly, so.
I think it's important that we add the parameters because it was such a free-for-all before.
For sure.
But then I think we can look at either rescinding the policy or freezing it. I don't, I think money needs to be spent in other places.
Yep, I agree.
All right, well, we'll worry about that another time. For now, let's get the, the wording changed and we'll have it back, I guess, two weeks for a second reading.
Okay, sounds good.
And then. Oh, district communications. Jason, you wanna handle this one? This was the.
In our security and safety committee meeting last Wednesday, fortunately, I guess, is, is one way to put it, is we are able to experience a severe power outage at all the schools. And, and one of the things that, that each school brought back to us was a, a brief overview of how they handled it, how they were able to communicate specifically. Most of the communications at, at, I think it's Keen River View, I'll probably get this completely wrong, but Keen River View and some of the other facilities, once they lost power, they lost all telephone, landline type stuff, internet. So utilizing the radios was their only way to communicate, not only amongst themselves, but also with the district office. That being said, a big part of, one of the, the underlying issues on every report was the fact that the radios were, were having issues with radios. I think how, the Housel, yeah, Housel is short a number of radios. I think it's twenty-six radios in, in total for that school to make sure that everybody can communicate accordingly. And then addition to that, I believe it's Keen River View. I probably get it wrong. I don't know if Glenn's, Glenn's not here.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. But I think it was Keen River View, maybe Housel and Witstrand that, or maybe it's the old PHS needed repeaters or boosters or whatever it was to get through all the buildings. I left that part out of my notes, I'm pretty sure.
I didn't, but they're on the dash of my pickup, not in front of me.
So it was Keen Review, Witstrand that had issues with repeaters. I did speak with Mel from Comcast and he said that, yes, we can purchase those for the individual buildings. And we also can purchase software program to reprogram the radios as we need to.
Okay, thank you. Do you know offhand if the repeaters are on about the same delay as the radios? If we order today, we get them and buy them or whatever?
Get there more of a delay right now.
So I think the gist of this, this topic here for discussion is we did find some gaps in our communication. So the need of fully outfitting Housel with an additional twenty-six radio and then also purchasing the repeaters or boosters in those schools so that they can communicate within the building as well as outside the building, I believe. And I, but I think, I don't know what the exact cost. Hopefully, we can get an estimate. But if we buy them now, I think they're six or eight months out, six months out, and we wouldn't have to pay for them till they came in, so.
It was about fifteen, if I remember correctly, really close to fifteen grand.
For the radios.
The radios, I think, were ten and, or maybe it was.
I think it's twenty-five thousand, somewhere in that ballpark.
Yeah, the radios were what, three seventy-five each? Anyway.
Yeah.
And I, actually, I would like to add to, to Jason's report on the same meeting, there was something else. I, I meant to have it put on here and I forgot. One of the big issues at Witstrand was they're on a well, they're not on city water.
That's right.
So when the power went out, they had no toilets, no running water, nothing, with a whole bunch of little kids. I would also like us to look into, and yes, I realize this is spending money when we don't, kind of don't have it. However, I do believe this is money well spent. I think not enough of a generator necessarily to run the whole place, but enough of a generator that in a pinch, Kevin or Gilman or somebody could run out, start it up, and at least have running water is pretty imperative. I think that's something we should look into as well.
Built into the bid for the construction, so it comes out of the capital fund?
I don't see why it couldn't.
I think we should look into that.
Yeah, can, it can be. Do you want, so we can talk to Dan. In fact, I was gonna, in my report, they're, they're planning on going out to bid May seventeenth. And so a brief meeting or an update might be appropriate at what CSG and Architects West are expecting out of that. Of course, we, we've done board meetings before and, and all sat there with the bid, but they can include that as an alternate in that, or even look at it, look, buy it out of contingency funds after the fact. And so, yeah, we can include that within the bid, but.
Or maybe just, maybe just include the wiring and we could purchase it ourselves. I'm gonna hate to be like that, but it's cheaper if we do it as opposed to.
Yeah, do you, would you like us to bring bids back for the radio, the radios and the repeater?
Yes.
Or, okay. We'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, I, we sat there and I know I took notes, too, and wrote it all down, but it was, it's, it's paramount that they be able to, to talk in the middle of a.
Right.
An emergency like that, yeah, so. Any other district communication questions, comments? All righty then, let's move on. They were the same thing, hotspots and boosters. We, I call them one thing, somebody called them different. Yeah, it's real tech savvy. You know how we are. All right, so the last thing on, on discussion is the migrant conference debrief, which would be Mr. Lariz. There you are.
Good evening. I'm gonna share my screen so you guys can actually see a presentation here. And for all those who are in Zoom as well.
Nice.
We ended up with COVID.
So first and foremost, I'd like to thank the board for allowing the migrant program to go ahead and participate at the national conference. One of the greatest things that while we're over there was that as, as much as we participated in the different sessions, we found that. we found that Prosser as a school district actually surpasses quite a lot of different districts in, in its ingenuity and its cutting edge technology and its innovation and it's, in its instruction. A lot of states like Nebraska, Texas, Oklahoma, Alaska were really interested in the things that we had to offer and what we had to say while we were there. So it was a great opportunity for us to collaborate with different programs and have a solid understanding. So we had several goals that we wanted to accomplish while we were there. We definitely wanted to make sure that we were enhancing our knowledge so that we could bring information home and expand the opportunities that we provide for our students here in the Prosser School District. In addition to that, one of the key points is we also wanted to build stronger bridges and relationships between our school district and the community that we serve. And so one of the, one of the highlights that we were able to experience on this journey was the participation of our high school principal, Mr. Brian Bailey. He joined us during the conference and had a lot of information to share, was also exposed to a lot of information. And it really solidified that relationship between the community we serve and the Prosser School District as a whole, not just the micro program itself. The lady that you see here, and I apologize, the Zoom different windows are kind of covering her picture, but this is Mrs. Erica Prosper. She is the wife of the mayor of San Antonio, Texas, and she is an a force to be reckoned with in the business community. She actually works for a Fortune 500 company and dominates in her field. But in her message, we had messages daily. We had a lot of different things that came forward. One of the biggest things that came forward was for us to embrace who we are and who are Prosser Mustangs, right? There's so many different pieces to that though. It's not just the old traditions that we keep, but the new traditions that we're making and the changing faces that are coming through our schools each and every day is amazing. And so we really need to embrace who our students are and who we serve and ensure that we're providing every opportunity to maximize their opportunities to grow, prosper and become effective productive citizens in whatever field they choose or wherever they decide to live. But no matter where they go, they ultimately still be ours and we will always welcome them home. We were hit right away with a lot of questions. We had to internalize, you know, we had to really kind of self-reflect and understand what that meant for us. And we did have some private breakout sessions with our parents and the rest of our team to really figure out what are those things that we need to cover and what are those things that we need to do. But first and foremost, we needed to understand that we needed to recognize where our kids are, what's happening with them, where's their focus. All of those things came into play in our conversations. And so as we continued to do our work and participate in our sessions of professional development, we kept these themes and tones with us at all times. And then we would debrief them when we got back into a kind of a, a general session, if you will. Each team member, our MSAs, our MGS, our recruiter, our secretary records clerk participated in different components of the sessions provided. Between all of us, between the parents, myself and the rest of the team members, we covered essentially ninety-two percent, ninety-five percent of all the sessions that were offered over the multiple days. Some sessions were actually offered multiple times throughout the conference, which was nice. So we were able to really spread out and then bring it all back to the group when we debrief together as a team. One of the biggest things inside of the conference was truly building relationships. If you noticed on the slide previous, see if I can go back, I apologize. If you look on the lessons learned, connection before content, that rang true on so many different levels. Because students and families can see you, they can read you. And if you don't have a connection with them and you don't build that relationship, then learning can occur because learning is something that's built on trust. I have to trust you in order to receive something from you. And so that was a big tone that came through in this training and I look forward to coming back and sharing with the rest of the district team and staff and helping to build a better future for our students and more opportunities as described before. Our social emotional understanding was really heightened. Mr. Eduardo Zepeda, he was our elementary migrant student coordinator. He spent a lot of time on this. And he works closely with all three elementaries and has a really good pulse on where kids are at, but this hit home for him. And so I'm looking forward to what he's creating right now in order for us to implement next year on how to ensure that we're supporting the social emotional learning of all of our students, not just our migrant students. We understand there's different cultures and climates and how those things come forward. In this presentation, I'll actually email to you, the board, so you guys have all that. I'm talking through this fairly quickly. However, it'll be made available to you so you can go deeper. And also you are more than welcome to stop by the office at any time. And I'll sit down and have a deeper conversation with you about it. And anybody in the public audience as well, if you have any questions or want to know more information, please feel free to stop by our office. But in our training, we understood that no matter what the climate is, again, it comes back to relationships. And a big component of it is that people want to belong to something, something positive, something great. And so we need to figure out what that's gonna look like here and how we're going to do that, not only with our students, but with all of our families that we mingle with and that we communicate with and that we participate in our children's education. So in conclusion, what were the outcomes? We definitely had bridges built. More importantly, we had bonds that were made with our families and with our staff. Knowledge was definitely expanded and we did come up with some solutions while we were there. Now, we don't want to operate in a silo, so there are some next steps that we have to do. And so we'll be meeting with our colleagues around the district to discuss what these different innovations are and how they can be implemented. However, I know that we have some work to do. We have to roll up our sleeves because of our current situation. But we are not afraid of that and we are ready to move forward with that. We have a plan of action and look forward to working with the rest of our team members here at Prosser to ensure that we continue to provide excellent customer service and programming for all of our students that we serve, not just the migrant program, but all students of Prosser. In addition to that, because of the work that we do and because of the amazing team that we have here, I feel that one of the things that is our next step in professional development is actually presenting to the rest of the nation and having them understand how truly amazing our students are and the staff that we work with. At this time, I have invited some parents. They did want to share some comments with you in regards to their experience and what they brought back. The, there will be speaking in Spanish, but we do have our interpreter, Mrs. Lupe Maldonado to assist. And in addition to that, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask either of us at any time.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Judith Guerrero. Y gracias a que nos dieron la oportunidad de asistir a esta conferencia. Una conferencia.
Good evening. My name is Judith Guerrero. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity in letting us attend this amazing conference.
Fue una conferencia donde aprendí más de lo que pensé que sabía, pero no lo sabía todo.
In this conference, I had the opportunity to learn more of what I thought I had a grasp on, but actually ended up learning more.
Y fue una muy buena información porque esa información que yo me traje se la voy a publicar a todos nuestros padres de nuestra comunidad.
And all that great information that I was able to learn, I am bringing to the community and the rest of the parents here in our district.
Para que así todos los padres se sientan orgullosos de que sus hijos al final de tanto esfuerzo que hicieron y poniendo atención se graduaron sus hijos.
So that at the end, when children graduate, their parents can be proud of all the work that we together have done to get them graduated.
Y pues tengo mucha más información, pero le voy a dar la chance acá a mi compañera.
I have lots of great information, but I'm gonna give my friend here the chance to speak as well.
Y muchas gracias por su atención y su tiempo.
And thanks for your time and attention.
My name is Teresa and okay, my speaking English is not that well, but I can try. Thank you again for letting me go to this trip. I have a lot of information to, to share with my kids. And, and also with the conference, the migrant program. And it's a lot of things, the new things that we can provide you to the school, like I like a lot of information update. Make new clubs right here and invite all the students to these clubs so they can make good grades and they can be good students too. And also I learn more that I, if we have, sorry.
Okay, then one of the takeaways that I got was that if people, say for example, in the offices are friendly and greet parents with a smile, then parents are more likely to get more involved and feel more welcomed when coming to each of the buildings.
I'm so excited. I have a lot of information, but I could try this.
And we also had a great time bonding with the team and getting to know them better and knowing that they are just like us, their parents and they're real people. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We, we do have some amazing parents. I think Mr. Bailey would like to offer a couple notes as well. Again, this will be emailed to you. So you have that available to you. And in our next steps, I hope to see each of you participate with us as well to continue that bridge building. Thanks.
I'll try to make it quick without reiterating too much of what has already been said. One of the most impactful moments for me was at the very beginning, the opening exercises and the introductory activity at this conference. We walked into a very large room. There's hundreds of people there already. We, you know, get our table set up, have our team set up there. And like many of you have seen, when we go to do presentations in the gym or even here, we have the translators present and we have headsets present for for everybody to make sure they understand what's going on. And I'll tell you what, I've never seen so many big smiles on their face when it's Mr. Bailey that wears the headset. Because they translated from Spanish into English. And going through that and being and feeling what many of our families, what many of our parents go through when we try to communicate in English and, and they don't quite have the understanding in English. It's exactly what I was able to feel and it changed my, my lens, changed my perception from the very beginning as I went to these sessions. And it was very, very impactful, very powerful to, to me as I learned the strategies and I, and I learned the different, different variances that different schools have available to them and to their students. There are a number of things that, that I learned here. Mr. Larez and our parents have talked about one. The, the term was connection before content. Loved it. It really was all about relationships, not just with our team, but building those relationships with other, other communities. We had, we have very many opportunities to talk with even people from Wenatchee, people from I'm trying to, Maptin had a group there, I believe. That was the lady sitting next, right next to me. But more so than that. So we have, I had wrote down relationships. And number two, increase community involvement specifically with the the groups and the, the demographic of parents that we're trying to reach and they're trying to help their students. Number three was what does school look like or what should school look like? Are we connecting with our highest population, quite frankly? Are we connecting our content with our highest population of students? Many of our students struggle because there is no connection. We have what we view as a tried and true method and we, we don't change those methods to reach the students on their level and with content that is specific to them. That was very important to me. Number four, we have a number of outstanding parents. Many of them are here tonight. Many of them are, are not here tonight. But outstanding parents and staff that attended this conference, they want to see their children achieve what they, many, many of them have not been able to achieve. They want their children to have what many of them have not. However, our parents sometimes do not have the resources and knowledge to be able to do that for their students. Many parents want to lead by example, yet they haven't graduated from high school. Many parents would like to commit to helping their, helping their kids, helping their families. And I, there are a number of things that came about here for me that were truly inspiring. Number one, inclusionary practice, which we've already begun here in the state of Washington, inclusionary practices will be implemented by the year twenty twenty-seven. We have already begun those practices here at, at our district, at Prosser School District. And we hope to continue those and grow those so that they are, they are district wide. Second, for inspiring, there were a number of students who received scholarships at this meeting, at this conference. And they were truly inspiring to hear as they got up and spoke and told their story. One of them was, we didn't get to listen to this one, this one did not give a speech, but a student from Grandview received one of the scholarships, national scholarships, and a student from Astoria, Oregon received one of the scholarships and their, their stories were so powerful. And I began to ask myself, why not Prosser? So I have two very personal goals. I want to see a Prosser student receive a scholarship from, from this institution. I want to see one of our or, or many of our migrant students receive scholarships from these, these, this group, and I believe that they can. And then second is to help parents achieve their personal goals in education. We had a program and I want to bring that back to help our parents also achieve their GED and diploma goals. And there are a number of parents, it's my understanding that many of the parents of our, of our high school age students and, and students of all ages throughout the district want help and would take that help. And there are programs available for them. We just need to bring them back to Prosser. There's one through CBC. There's one through CBC and other, other areas that we've already looked into and discussed. So very inspiring and it truly changed my outlook and changed my, my focus. So I appreciate your willingness to let us go and I thank you and I thank the families for going with us, thank you.
Alrighty guys, let's move on to reports, we'll start with Assistant Superintendent of Business.
Just a couple of things before I get to the financials and the enrollment, the audit is getting close to conclusion. I had about a half hour conference call with the auditor today and finalized some, some last minute questions. So hopefully we'll be getting close to have that done and have an exit conference that the board will be invited to. Number two, obviously we are working on the 2223 budget. One thing that Amy, our transportation director would want me to bring up tonight was. Whether we want seat belts on the buses, the new buses, her, of course, we're working on the budget, as I said. She wants to purchase two buses in 2223 and two more buses in the 2324 school year. And the seat belts are, you know, eight to 10,000, eight to 12,000 more. The state does not, of course, fund those at this time. She didn't know if the board had really given direction on whether they want seat belts on the buses or not. So I'm not sure, you don't have to answer that tonight, just something to be aware of, we do. We've worked with Bluebird, who is our bus vendor and they have offered us, of course, it's self-serving on both our parts and their part. That they would give us the current bus pricing if we ordered these buses, even though we're a couple of years down the road. Current year pricing, but we need to order them by May 15th. Again, it's kind of interesting, I hate to have a gun to our head, but. Certainly there's going to be an increase in the price of the buses, but they will hold those because we won't be able to really purchase those buses. Until probably August of 23.
So what you're saying is they want us to place an order and we don't have to worry about it until down the road.
Correct.
But we will, of course, be on the hook.
They'll kind of be on hold in the manufacturer of buses, but they'll be at today's prices, so just something to think about. Maybe next week or something, we can discuss it because they do want to have an order by May 15th.
And that comes out of the general fund.
And her recommendation is not to have the seat belts, but.
Yeah, we paid. We did, we got a loan for the buses and they paid the loan with the pilt money, is what we had been doing until we got caught up. But if you figure what was 8% inflation last year, arguably it's probably going to be that or worse next year.
Yes.
Man, that's a hard sell.
Just for the board's information, the state of Washington, it actually goes out to bid for the buses. And then we choose whichever vendor we want based on, you know, the capacity, those kind of things for the bus. So we don't personally bid those, but the state does. We do some add-ons, some options, you know, different things that are not part of the base bid, so to speak, but. Seat belts certainly are not, are not part of that.
I know as a group we had decided, I thought that we wanted seat belts moving forward. I guess the question would be, do we have enough trip buses with belts? Not, not that the kids in town are, you know, less valuable, but a 35 mile an hour crash versus a 65 mile an hour crash are two vastly different things.
I mean, I certainly can maybe come and talk a little more openly than I can, but.
Whatever struggle.
Andy, this is Peggy and I thought we were using the money to pay for new buses. Based on the reimbursement money that we received every year and that money went into a pot. So that actually the buses were being paid for out of the, as the buses were on the reimbursement schedule. So it really was, we were able to continue to buy new buses based on how much reimbursement money we were, were receiving every year. For the older buses as they were being, as they were going off the schedule. So we were able to, basically they were paying for themselves, the new buses were being paid for by the old buses. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Did that make sense, Andy?
We had talked about something like that, do you remember how it worked out?
Yeah.
It was pilt money.
Yeah, it wasn't, was, I don't think we're using pilt money for that, the pilt money was paid for the pickups and the motor pool that we had to. That way we needed to update, but the buses were being paid for out of the, the yearly reimbursement we got every year for. That reimbursement schedule as the buses were. As the buses were aging, the state would reimburse us so much, I think it was over eight years or 10 years. Buses would be, would receive reimbursement money from the state for those buses. And I believe that money came in in August. And then that money we would bank then to buy new buses. So essentially we got into a schedule where we weren't having to cough up capital dollars for buses. We were using the reimbursement dollars we received from the state to pay for those new buses. Right, Craig?
The state does not.
A pilt was. Right, a pilt was, was used to pay for the motor pool that we purchased.
Oh, that's right.
The SUVs and the pickup, the maintenance pickups that we purchased.
Go ahead, Greg.
The state does not fund, as she said, for the seat belts.
Right. Right, yeah, I understood that part, yeah.
Depreciation pays for the new ones and as they.
Right.
You already have them, correct?
The, the state has a funky formula. In that, in business, whatever we pay for the, you know, for a bus or a piece of equipment, we would be able to claim depreciation on that. The state does not fund 100% of the cost of that bus.
Right, because they don't reimburse for the belts.
They pay substantially most of that bus and we do receive that depreciation August 31st of every year. So that is, that is the issue is, and we're probably going to need to go out for loans on these buses. Because, for example, this year our depreciation is like 235, 250,000. And. For two buses.
Yeah, that's only about one bus, correct?
We're going to be a little short, we have some loans in the past that is, when I go over the budget for the. That service fund making the payments, you'll see that there's some depreciation, I mean, some, some debt service still remaining on those buses.
Okay.
But.
Do we.
A good question on.
Do we still get about $3,500 per bus when we take them offline? That one program that we were, we had, Craig, that if we took buses offline. I think we had to incapacitate the motors or something, then the, there was a grant that we could get $3,500 for each of those buses?
Yes, the past couple of years, there were some, I think it's EPA grants, maybe, I might have the wrong agency. That paid us to basically get rid of those older buses.
Right.
There's rumors of new grants that we will certainly look at if it comes available.
Okay, $500 from the farmers, so.
Okay, well, you guys have any questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to see a proposal first, you know, the, the two buses next year and the two the following, how it's going to be paid for. You know, kind of the depreciation breakdown, how much money we're going to get as well as. I guess a potential loan, I'm just not sure we're in the position to do a loan at this point, but.
Well, the loan would be paid back from the Transportation Vehicle Fund.
Well, I understand that, but if we still got to buy four buses, right?
Right, so the theory is that the depreciation pays, makes for some of those payments.
I would like to see the proposal, I'd like to see all that before I make a decision on it.
And I think I would like to see the status of the entire fleet, how many buses we have, what the depreciation schedule is, what the mileage is, what the. I guess, and if you say retention schedule, but you know, how long are we keeping them, when are we revolving them out, you know, and is it necessary?
Okay, fair question, comment. The other two things are the March financials. Just bring to the board's attention, we are actually seven months through the school's year, which started September 1. So that's 58%, 58.3% through the year. You do have the information through the month of March and then comparing the previous two years. Just a couple of comments that I made, if you can read it at the bottom. I try to, you know, look at the previous month and make some comments if there are some substantial differences and. You'll notice that in the other local revenue column, 22,000 for the month of March. Previous months were, you know, roughly, you know, 1,000, a little bit less than that. We did actually receive a grant from United Way. And so that's in there and then we have an ECA, our ECAP program. We receive rental, basically facility rental for them using our classrooms and that was $9,245. So those two big items are unusual, that's, that makes up that difference in the other local. The expenses were, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars less than the previous month, so that's good. It's interesting to me, I also like to look at the percentages compared to the other years and that's actually on the graph. Right at the beginning there and our revenue is a little bit lower compared to previous years, you know, 52%. Last year was almost 54 and then 54 in the 1920 school year. Our expenses are pretty close as a, as a percentage of the budget, you know, 54%. 54 last year and then 57 in the 1920 school year. Year to date, our fund balance, as you can see, has dropped a million and 995,000. April will be our highest revenue month, so that number will be substantially lower for the month of April when we receive our property tax payments. And just a reminder quickly to the board, when we talk next, next week. We still will be receiving some property tax money in the, in the fall, next school year. But then we will not receive any property tax money for the entire school year or entire calendar year of 2023. Which will affect the spring of 2023 and then the, the fall of, of the next school year. So that's something we'll be looking at. As far as the enrollment, you'll see that we have 20 new students that enrolled during the month of April and 29 withdrew. That's on the first page and we are still up 11 over the budget that I proposed. Estimated for the 2122 school year, so I'm hoping that that number will, you know, at least be in the positive. We have two more months of enrollment, the first day of May and the first day of June. That's really all that I have to report on tonight. Any questions that I can answer?
So the 15 that moved, has their families moved or just changed? Their families moved out of district?
Yes.
Questions? On the second assistant superintendent report, curriculum. Deanna, what you got for us?
So in the board packet, just the one thing, the summer, the draft summer school schedule. We, we haven't put out registration for everything, but we have put out registration for the K8 Arts and STEM and we have. About 180 kids already wanting to attend that, so that's great, hopefully we have enough money. We are going to use some migrant funding, Title I, some Title IV and some SHER funds to help pay for this program. And probably also some LAP for the high school, Mustang Academy. I'm not sure who Darlene Mercer is, I know Tammy typed this up, maybe she was on a little cross-eyed. So it's Darlene Morrow on the food service part down at the bar bottom, but we are going to offer some preschool. Pre-kinder to kinder jumpstart for some of our incoming kinders. Some reading intervention, that will probably be some SHER money, that, that learning recovery for some of our K2 students that are. Showing that they're having struggles in reading and then also Algebra is a Gatekeeper course. So our eighth and ninth graders that need some extra help in being successful in algebra, we're going to offer an algebra readiness course. And then some, hopefully some high school STEM. Our middle school summer program has considerably less interest than the elementary, I'm not sure how the 912 will go, we haven't put that out yet, but it will be going out soon. Any questions on that?
Who will be teaching the elementary art and STEM?
We haven't hired anybody yet, the jobs were just posted, so. The elementary is going to run a little different than the middle school because of attention span. So the elementary will have like a morning session after, they'll like do some flipping flopping. Whereas at the middle school and the high school will do a week at a time in a particular area. They may do, they'll probably be doing different activities and, you know, shifts throughout the day, but. We're going to break it up a little differently at the K5 area.
Did you say it was 508 students already enrolled?
We have 157 elementary kids and 18 middle schoolers so far that have. Have filled out the, parents, they've filled out the form and we haven't put out any of the others yet. The algebra readiness and the kinder jumps, well, the algebra readiness and the K3 intervention will be by referral. For students who are needing that support as, and so will the Mustang Academy. And then nine through 12, we're going to get that out, we'll probably get that out next week and see if we have some students interested in, in learning some, some STEM at the high school. Any other questions?
I thought the schedule looked great, I know a lot of the elementary moms, that's kind of my, one of my main communication groups. Were so thrilled to see this and to have this option and just thought it was wonderful, so I really appreciated the schedule, I think it's great. I hope that we get more interest in middle school, but I just think the STEM available for the high school kids is really exciting to have that option.
We just know that high school might have a little more conflict because of jobs and different things, but athletics. So that's a little bit more challenging, I'm going to work with Brian about the, maybe the best time of day to try to do that program. But yeah, we're excited to offer this and it sounds like the families are pretty excited too.
Thank you, Deanna.
You're welcome.
Alright, move on to superintendent's report.
I only have a few items. First item was a business manager position that will close at the end of this week. We have, we have a shallow pool or a fairly shallow pool if we don't get more applicants. That's not to say that the people that we have applied, we have, we have people who are qualified for that job. And so we will probably continue on with screening and then interviewing. And if board members would like to be a part of that, I'd actually encourage it. If you'd like to be a part of that, just let me know. As I talked about, there'll be advertising and then bidding with Strand, the bid will be on May 17th. I believe it may be beneficial to connect with Archtext West and primarily CSG before that bid, just so we're not surprised. If the bids come in way too high, we may have to go back to the drawing board and re-scope the project. So that is, that is something, that's a reality of the economy that we're living in. Today was Administrative Professionals Day, so a shout out to all our administrative professionals that work in central services. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week and so we're preparing something for them and I just really want to express how. How much I appreciate and I'm grateful for all our teachers and all the hard work they put in over the past couple of years. And then the last one was a policy thing. Selena and I are working on a spreadsheet, we'll get that out to you. There are a number of different policies, as you know well, that we need to update. So we're working on kind of a master spreadsheet that will guide some of that work. And then we have our legal counsel working on reviewing the nepotism policy for next reg. And then we have our legal counsel working on reviewing the nepotism policy for our next regular scheduled board meeting. As well as, I know that Deanna and Elisa, we're going to work on the teacher. Teacher GoFundMe and teacher donation policy as well. So we have those in the hopper that we're working on bringing to the board. Any questions on any of that information? Okay, thank you.
Matt, let's move on to board member reports. Let's go Zoom first. Jeannie, Peggy, either one of you want to chime in?
I don't have anything tonight, Andy. Thank you.
Okay, I'm I'm here. I'm I'm sorry that I missed the snow in Prosser. Had lovely weather while I've been gone. And we got to watch our oldest grandson and granddaughter both graduate college. And I'm sitting in this huge auditorium and I'm thinking to myself, I hope that as a board group. And a school district that we are providing kind of education our students need that qualify them to go to college. It was very emotional for me thinking about it, but I've had a great time and we'll be home tomorrow.
We hope you have a good time. Lisa?
Sure, I have a few things. I'll start, it's kind of jotted down. Grandview School District had a firearm in one of their schools today, had to call law enforcement and I just thought. You know, how thankful that I am for our great security team and how important it is. That we are able to hopefully keep that entirely funded and keep the great guys that we have working to keep our students safe. And I'm thankful that nothing happened further in our neighboring district. I had a couple of parents reach out to me regarding a hiring committee for fall sports and wanted to know what the process was for that. And who they should contact and they thought that would be a good way to start getting involved and build up interest and, you know, for future positions for them. I'm hopeful that we could, I I would like to start, you know, on Saturdays, I'm going to start having, inviting the public for listening sessions. I think that's a good way to start listening to what the community concerns are and needs are. And what will make a no levy vote a yes vote. And so I I'll start doing that and invite other board members as as you want to do that with me. I'll start, not this weekend, but the following weekend to do that. I was part of the Prosser Rotary that put on the sixtieth Rotary Internet Invitational Track Meet at the high, the track, the stadium on Saturday. I was in the concession stand all day. I heard lots of feedback about beautiful new school and our stadium, but a lot of concerns about the surface of the track. And I was unfamiliar with that and I think, you know, we should, we need to look into that. Whether it's, you know, the rumor mill, the grapevine that we talk about, you know, are there lanes that other schools are talking about, like, don't use two and five, it's dangerous. Or, you know, what Miss Phillips said regarding shin splints and injuries, are we not having as many track meets at home due to the surface of our track? And what does it take to bring that up to speed? And then my final issue, and this was brought up to my attention by a parent this afternoon, was that a teacher at the middle school in PE told. Told the girls that they can no longer wear their running shorts in PE class, starting immediately tomorrow. And if they do, they'll be either lose participation points for not dressing down or have to wear something in the. The the old box full of clothes and the point that was brought up is these exact running shorts are what are being worn by the middle school track team. But there's not a difference. They had a side by side of the same, the same student in the track shorts and in the shorts for PE. They're the same length, they cover the same parts. I think with six weeks maybe left of school, I don't, I don't know why we're changing up dress code issues now. Doesn't make sense to me. They're the same type of shorts the track team wears. Maybe we can address this and implement some common sense there. That's my report for this this evening.
Jason, what's the?
Yeah, I mentioned the safety and security. I'm not going to go into that, but it was a good meeting. I think we're we're moving in the right direction. Trying to get all our policies in order and updated, so we'll continue to see more of that. Those policies come out of that committee. Also, I am not going to get too far into the weeds. We've heard enough about the track, but I did hear the same thing. That Rachel Phillips mentioned that the, you know, schools do not want to come to our track just for safety concerns. Which brings me to the point that I've asked multiple times is, I don't think we have a facilities plan. We have a a number of very expensive facilities and it's been a common denominator. That we take care of a mediocre at best and then they get to a point where they they're unsafe. Or they're hard to use or there there just becomes too much of a burden to maintain. So I I would definitely propose that we start a facilities plan that don't, not only looks at current facilities. But also future facilities and how, you know, the maintenance life or the shelf life of each of those facilities. You know, I either, you know, the track surface, you know, if it's a fifteen-year track life, then we should be looking at it ten years down the road. Or maintaining it accordingly, or saving up stockpiles of money to get it, you know, to get that, those those projects done. So I would like to see that done. But other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not the grapevine. The track is crap. It's been crap for.
A long time.
A number of years. We were way behind ten years ago when we started trying to figure these things out and we're still still playing catch up. I was going to echo the the safety meeting that I went to with with Jason. It was very, very productive. Didn't have a whole lot of extra, however, on the shorts comment without poking a hornet's nest. If they're the same, she should wear them and bring it to a head. We'll worry about it down the road. That's what I would tell my kid. So that's all I've got. Let's finish up, future board meetings. We are going to do, do we want to do an official meeting Monday or just Wednesday and?
That's up to. So that that's up to the board. If we need to have a meeting, at least one. Like I said, if if the board has time to do two in a row, we can definitely do that and post that as a special meeting. But if the board only has time to do one, then then I will need, Craig and I and Deanna will probably need. Some access to different board members to help us gather our thoughts around basically coming about a. Proposal of priorities. So it's it's all up to, all up to you how you want to run it.
Well, guys, I'm thinking this is a pretty big deal. I'm going to say we do a Monday, six o'clock upstairs and then a Wednesday, six o'clock upstairs. And between now and then, or even between those meetings, if if any of the board members have time to. Drop in and talk with them, notes, idea, I mean, this is going to be a big deal, so. There there's going to be a lot of heavy lifting and name-calling when it's all said and done. I mean, that's just, it is what it is, so.
I'm available to meet.
Oh, I'm available, yeah.
With Matt or Deanna or Craig. I won't know my availability on Monday until Friday, but I'm available on Wednesday.
Even if only three of us can meet, zoom in, call in, we can tell you how it went.
Right.
I just think at this point, the sooner rather than later is by far the best, best approach, so. Peggy, you said.
I'm available both Monday, yeah, I'm available both Monday and Wednesday at six o'clock.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, guys, we got nothing. Oh, I didn't read the next. Regular board meeting, May eleventh, and then we do a May eighteenth study session, May, that ought to go well. Seven o'clock upstairs and then the next regular meeting after that will be May twenty-fifth and we are adjourned.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Have a good night, guys.